This is for Bishop Brookins. And it's my understanding with the return of Mr. Labange and Mr. Cardenas that Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks can go represent the city as we celebrate the life of a great man. But this is a very important day for other reasons. Are they ready? I just said, are they ready? And then a bird whispers in my ear, no. So just hold tight. We'll come up with something to fill some time. Let me look through. Mr. Labange, no, that's no reason for you to get up and go on a riff, but...
We welcome everybody in the city of Los Angeles tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning to New Fire Station 82, along with Councilmember Garcetti. We were able to build this new state-of-technology, green building, three-story firehouse. 82 was replaced a 60-year-old station on Bronson. It's at Van S at Hollywood Boulevard. Welcome between 10 and 2 to Fire Station 82. And the next thing I want to announce is it's an open house for North Central Sanitation. And there's nobody who works harder in the city of Los Angeles than the sanitation workers of Los Angeles. And they will be open house on 425 San Fernando Road. And if ever you live in North Central area, which is Highland Park through Silver Lake, East Hollywood area, those are your collectors. It's an open house. Bring your families down. Young children love it. It's a lot of fun. Open house in our Bureau of Sanitation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Your services are invaluable. You know why? Because it is now my pleasure to bring forward the greatest mayor of the greatest city, joined by our great colleague Bill Rosendahl. If you guys could please come forward, let's start today's very important presentation. Give him a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, our great mayor, Antonio Villarigosa.
I think we're gonna hear one more song, aren't we?
Yes.
Let's hear another song.
Right.
There we go.
Well, you guys hit it. Thank you. You were wonderful.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And we've invited the mayor into our chambers. But let me just say this about our mayor. He has shown moral leadership for our basic civil and human rights than anybody I know in the political system. He's been fantastic with us. Give him a round of applause. And it's an honor for me to present to you our great honor to present our mayor, Antonio Villarigosa.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. And there's no one on this council. Let me acknowledge Adawe, everybody, for leading us in the chamber. Thank you so much, Adawe. Yes. There's no one that I know who has been a more passionate advocate for the LGBT community, quite like Councilmember Rosendahl. Let's give him a big hand. Thank you for helping us today. You know, as Adawe was coming in and we were hearing the beat of the drum, I heard the drumbeat of pride, the drumbeat of courage, and the drumbeat of love. So let's give a big hand again to Adawe. Now, this month, we celebrate the history and the heritage of our LGBT brothers and sisters. And Los Angeles glows with all of the colors of the rainbow. Now, it takes a tremendous amount of energy and effort to organize these heritage events. And I think you'll all acknowledge, over the last seven years, they have been very, very robust. Because it is important for us to honor and embrace our many communities. But I'd like to recognize and thank Christopher Street West, L.A. Pride, the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Heritage Month Planning Committee for planning the LGBT Heritage Month opening celebration. We're here today because of their hard work, their enthusiasm, and their dedication. Now, the theme of this year's LGBT Heritage Month is celebrating the past and shaping the future. Now, according to most history books, the modern gay rights movement began with the Stonewall riots in New York in 1969. We think it's time to revise the history books just a bit. It's time to claim L.A.'s rightful place as a pioneer in the struggle for equality and rights for the LGBT community, not just in California, but across America. Two years before Stonewall, there was a similar event here in Los Angeles. On New Year's Eve in 1967, Silver Lake's Black Hat Tavern was raided. 16 people were arrested. Two were beaten unconscious. Los Angeles' gay community would never be the same. They had had enough, enough harassment, enough disrespect, enough inequality. The raid sparked a series of protests and gave birth to L.A.'s gay pride movement. In the aftermath of the raid and protest, the Advocate, the oldest continuing LGBT publication in the United States, was born. Participants in those early protests came together to form the nation's first gay church, the Metropolitan Community Church. Today, the church has 275 congregations in 46 states and 23 countries. LGBT history in L.A. is woven out of many such milestones. In 1947, the first lesbian magazine in the country, Vice Versa, was published here. In 1970, L.A. hosted the first LGBT pride parade. L.A. is home to the country's oldest and largest LGBT archive. And our LGBT leaders and activists have played key roles in the ongoing campaign for marriage equality and full civil rights for the LGBT community. I am honored to stand with you today. Now, we all know that silence is the enemy of justice. Silence lets indifference flourish. And where there is silence, the seeds of prejudice sprout. The people and organizations here today in this chamber have never been silent. You've been loud, and you've been proud. Thank you for your dedication, for your advocacy. Our city, our world, is a better place because of your passionate commitment to equal rights. Now, this is a pivotal year. I don't think any one of us would deny that tremendous progress has been made in the area of LGBT civil rights. In six states plus the District of Columbia, gay couples can now walk down the aisle like everyone else. In February, I stood in the rotunda of City Hall and celebrated this Ninth Circus Declaration that Proposition 8 is unconstitutional. There are even signs all across the country that public opinion is starting to shift. Six national polls from last year show majority support for gay marriage. And just last month, the President of the United States of America, Barack Obama, declared his support for marriage equality. But for all of these legal and political victories, we still live in a world where gay teens are bullied for the simple fact of being who they are. We still live in a world where millions of people cannot fulfill one of the most basic of human desires. They cannot legally marry the person they love. This is what we fight for. We fight for rights. We fight for just laws. We fight for justice. We fight for something else. Something closer to the heart than legal codes and licenses. We fight for the simple freedom to be who we are. We fight for a world where every young person can grow up and discover themselves without violence, without prejudice, with pride. We fight for something very simple, but very profound. We fight for love. We fight for humanity. It is indeed a privilege to stand here and celebrate the opening of the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Heritage Month with you. And I'm here to say that I'm proudly to the city where the diversity of the LGBT community is celebrated with such spirit and such style. And so, let me announce and bring up our creative writing winners. I'd like to introduce our LGBT student creative writing video competition winners. In third place, but they're all winners, from Fairfax High School, a ninth grader, Max Geschwind, won with his essay... A ninth grader, he won with his essay, "Celebrating Our Past: Shaping the Future." Congratulations. Thank you. In second place, from Highland Hall Waldorf School, a ninth grader, Lila Matar, with her song, "Only Love." And in first place, from Vista School, an 11th grader, Jesús Navarro, won with his poem, "Our Heritage." Can I have the other two winners for... Now, today, it is also my privilege to present the LGBT Heritage Awards to three extraordinary individuals. Each time she graces a stage, Karina Samala expands our definition of beauty as the producer of Queen USA and Queen of the Universe Transgender Pageants, as the current Empress of the Imperial Court of Los Angeles and Hollywood, and as a former Miss California Continental 1990, Queen of the Universe 1991, and Miss Gay Universe 1995. Karina has delighted us with her charm, her grace, and her elegance. For 25 years, Karina has campaigned for equal rights and for the LGBT community, collaborating with the Los Angeles Police Department to create recommended police standards for interactions with the transgender community, forever changing policies toward police conduct with the transgender community. For her glamour, for her extensive and continued work in the community, for her passionate fight against discrimination, for her dedication to promoting transgender rights, I am proud to honor Karina Samala with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award.
Thank you so much, Mayor Villarigosa. I am blessed to have many friends and family present here today. It is not possible to mention everyone, but there are few people I wish to acknowledge. The mayor of West Hollywood, Jeffrey Prang, who has been my mentor, friend, and great supporter for me and my community. And without him, I would not be standing here today. 10 years ago, Jeffrey asked me to join the Sheriff's LGBT Advisory Council. Jeffrey pushed me to get involved with many transgender community, and now I cannot stop. The first step is always the hardest to take. And thank you, Jeffrey, for pushing me and taking that first step. The other person I would like to acknowledge is Commander Buddy Goldman of the Sheriff's Department. I worked with Commander Goldman when he was still a captain of West Hollywood Station on law enforcement issues. He is always willing to listen and has become trusted friend to me and my community. I am the chair of the City of Los Angeles Human Relations Commission Transgender Working Group. The transgender working group was created as a committee of the LGBT Advisory Council of Los Angeles Human Relations Commission. After an LAPD-sponsored forum in July 2007, where members of the transgender community and Los Angeles Police Department articulated the need for more dialogue to promote mutual understanding. As part of this process, we gathered statements from the transgender community and relayed statements to LAPD senior management, held a public forum on interactions between transgender community and LAPD. We also worked to develop recommended policies and procedures for the LAPD on interaction with transgender individuals. We were extremely gratified that the recommended procedures and policies have been published and are being implemented by LAPD today. I have to thank Mayor Villarigosa and your staff, Susie, Jack, Justin Gonzalez, Steve Oliver, who have done exceptionally job in guiding us and facilitating our meetings with LAPD. And of course, Shereen Bachman and Patricia Villarigosa from the City Human Relations Commission. I'd like to give special thanks to Chief Charlie Beck, Captain Lindsay, and Chief Hara, and the whole LAPD department for making this change as possible. I would like to share with you a bit of story of now that I got to this point in my life. I was born in the Philippines. I grew up with seven sisters, some of whom are here tonight. I had a loving family and many friends. Yet, I knew at a young age that I was not meant to live my life as a man. However, in the Philippines at that time, I knew I could not have lived openly as the person I knew I was. I simply felt that there was no other way for me, no safe place for me to be honest with myself and others about the fact I felt with all my heart that I intended to become a woman. I assumed I would always have to live pretending to be a person I knew I was not true self. Around the age of 25, along with other members of my family, I was able to immigrate in the United States. I settled in the Los Angeles area and worked as an aerospace engineer at Northrop Grumman. I continued to care myself as a man. From the outside, I sure appeared to be happy, successful person. But inside, I knew I was playing a role more than living my life. Somewhere around this time, an amazing thing began happening to me. For so long, I had suppressed my feelings and was too frightened to ever dwell on what it meant to like to come out and live as a woman. I knew I was inside. But slowly, and I began to let those thoughts enter my mind. And the reason I began to believe that maybe, just maybe, I could actually be open to myself and others about my identity and truly because of a spirit of Los Angeles. And by that, I mean I began to see the incredible diversity of the people here and the amazing bravery of the people in the LGBT community. But the spirit of Los Angeles was something beyond the rising disability of the LGBT community. It was a tolerance and the support shown by non-LGBT people of Los Angeles and its leadership. But here in Los Angeles, I saw the overwhelming majority of people cared more about what you had to offer the community than what gender you choose for yourself. I slowly began to realize that Los Angeles, a dream that I had never dreamed growing up, a place that allowed everyone, including those in the LGBT community, the opportunity to live open, productive lives and be welcomed into a community life and accept as partners in the progress of Los Angeles and strong voices of contributions to make this city we all share and love. It was this spirit of Los Angeles which helped give me the strength to do what I had thought for so long was impossible. The spirit of this city continued to give me strength and amazing opportunities to help improve the lives of LGBT community, including the opportunity to work with law enforcement and political leaders of the city to promote understanding of the LGBT community, fight intolerance in all its forms, and reduce mistrust. And these efforts have been the most rewarding work of my life. And I see progress and hope for the future. I have received awards at times for these efforts, but no award more gratifying than the Spirit of Los Angeles, a word I am honored to receive today. It is my distinct honor to say to all of you here today that together we share the spirit of Los Angeles. And the spirit is the hopeful beacon of all of us in the LGBT community and for our society as well. Thank you.
By the way, Karina reminds us that we're very lucky to have a progressive police chief that understands that our department not only is in the job of protecting, but in the job of serving. And the fact that they have worked on this new policy and standard, Commander Chief Hara, is a great honor. And it's great to have you both here with us today. The Dream of Los Angeles, Jewel Tase Williams. Now, sometimes you must travel down many paths before you find your true calling. Jewel Tase Williams has been a seamstress, a club owner, and an Eastern medicine practitioner. But it is her extraordinary work with the minority LGBT community for which she is being honored today. As a founding board member of the Unity Fellowship Church, she has worked to preach that God is love and love is for everyone. She started the Minority AIDS Project, the first community-based HIV/AIDS organization established and managed by people of color in the entire United States of America. She's played a pivotal role in Rue's House, the first residential home for women and children with AIDS in the country. She helped to start UCLA's Lambda Alumni Association, the university official LGBT alumni organization. And she's the executive director of the Village Health Foundation, a free alternative health clinic located next door to her club, Catch One Disco. Every day, Jewel Tase Williams fights for the care and the dignity of the LGBT community and underserved populations in Los Angeles. For her commitment to equality, for her tireless advocacy on behalf of the vulnerable, I am proud to honor Jewel Tase Williams with the Dream of Los Angeles Award.
Thank you. I love L.A. This is my hometown. I've been around for the last 50, 60 years here in L.A. And I've seen the changes. I've been a part of a lot of those changes. But I could not have done it without the help and the encouragement and the support from my community. The Catch will celebrate its 40th anniversary next year. And yes, you should be proud, those of you that have supported and those of you that have given me support over the years. I appreciate and love you dearly. When you look around, you see the rainbow. Look around, you see every race, every color, every creed represented here. We come, as you know, in all colors. We come with all spiritual connections. We come to have lived for 73 years. I've seen a few changes happening. I am extremely proud of this day when I can say that I am legally married to the person that I love. 23 years we've been together. If it weren't for people like the mayor and the forward-thinking council people that are here, especially Councilman Rosendahl, I couldn't say that. The fight is not over. We're probably someplace in the middle. I want to be here to see it end, so let's keep it rolling.
Hope. The hope of Los Angeles honored today is George Takei. As the helmsman of the Starship Enterprise, George Takei is a true television and cultural icon. He's used his fame to become one of the most recognizable advocates for gay rights. George's passion for advocacy was sparked early. From age four to eight, George Takei was unjustly held in two U.S. internment camps during World War II. This experience shaped his lifelong dedication to community and to human rights. As a member and a spokesperson for the Human Rights Campaign, he educates the nation about his experience as a gay Japanese-American man. As half of the first gay couple to appear on the Newlywed Game, he and his husband Brad made television history in 2009 and, for good measure, won $10,000 for charity. As the proud namesake of the asteroid located between Mars and Jupiter, asteroid 7307 Takei, he maintains his place among the stars of both space and... Takei, he maintains his place among the stars of both space and Hollywood. With a career spanning five decades as an actor, author, and activist, fighting not only the Klingons, but stereotypes, George Takei is truly one of our country's and our city's treasures. I am proud to honor my friend with the Hope of Los Angeles Award. George Takei.
All right, George.
Today's the first day of Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. Yesterday was Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and a few months before that was African American Heritage Month. And the three of us represent, represent four of the diversity in this city. This is a city of infinite diversity and infinite combinations. And as we three, and I am very privileged and honored to be put in the company of three very accomplished and determined activists, we are surrounded by good news. Yesterday, we heard the news from Boston. The Hated in Defense of Marriage Act has been ruled unconstitutional by Boston's Massachusetts appellate court. And this comes in the heels of two California decisions, judging, the federal court judge and the Circuit Court appellate court judge deeming Proposition 8 unconstitutional. I am presented with the Hope Award this morning. I am not only hopeful, I am very optimistic that we will have major change coming very soon in this country, and we will have equality for all people. I am proud to be a native Angelino in this city of infinite diversity and infinite combinations in the combination, in the company of Karina and Jewel to receive this hopeful award, the LGBT Award from the City of Los Angeles. I am honored, I am grateful, and I am optimistic. You are a chamber full of change agents, and we will see magnificent change coming to this democracy of ours. Thank you very much.
Beautiful. Great, 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 great.
A good shot with all the honorees. Here's yours. Here, you. Can you hold on?
Yeah, please.
There we go. You know, I think it's fitting to end with something I, I like to say, and I don't just say, by the way, on this month, I don't just say, when I'm speaking out against Prop 8 or in defense of marriage equality, I say it wherever I go. And it's the following. I said, you know, what I love about this town is this is a town that embraces all of us. It's a town that doesn't care who your father is. In my case, they don't care that I didn't have one. And with Judge Walker's decision, they don't care if you have two of them.
I love it.
And I think that in many ways is what today is all about. We celebrate our common humanity. We celebrate that we're all God's children. We celebrate the love that says that I am my brother and my sister's keeper. And so for me, it is indeed an honor to stand here with these honorees and with my friend, Councilmember Rosendahl. I am, will be taking leave. I have to be at the funeral of Bishop Brookings, and I would hope that we would adjourn in his memory. A great man, a pastor, bishop, a civil rights leader, a man I've known for a long time and a great friend. Councilmember Rosendahl.
Yes. Before the mayor leaves, first of all, we want to thank the mayor for his leadership. It's been an incredible leadership the last seven years as our mayor. He's really led the way. Big round of applause for the mayor. Okay. Couple of things, folks, real quick. Colleagues, you know there's a motion that you right now have before you, and this motion supports State Senator Ted Lieu, who is standing here with us. And we're going to ask for your support on this motion in a couple of seconds, but while the mayor is here, I want to be able to honor the three honorees that we're talking about here. The first are young people. The future are the young people. The more we support our young folks, the more we're there for them, the more important their lives and their positive feelings will be. Many of the homeless young people are gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender. Many of them are in dysfunctional homes where things happen that you don't want to hear about and people leave. And we have a substantial amount of young people in this town that frankly need our support, and they're homeless as well. So I want Jeff Griffith to come on up right now, the youth center at the Gay and Lesbian Center, to come on up for a quick moment. Thank you, and the young people with him for providing the leadership for all of us. And we have a certificate for you, and we're just grateful that you are doing what you're doing. Just turn it around this way. There you go. That's how we do it. Okay. Thank you very much. Not to speak right this moment, I just want to get everything moving rather quickly on this. Okay. The next group we're going to honor is L.A. Black Pride. Let me just say this. Stand up. Come on up. You know, our mayor is going to the Reverend Brookings' funeral. The black community has a very strong religious presence. Ministers have a lot to say and have a lot of impact, and these issues among African-Americans are substantially serious in many spiritual ways. Over the last period of years, the African-Americans in our great city would go up to Malibu, you know, to have their gay pride. They weren't out of the closet for the obvious reasons that some ministers have a misinterpretation of the Holy Spirit and of God. We all know that our nature is our nature. We don't determine our nature. Either we accept ourselves or we don't. And when you accept your nature, realize that your energy, your nature, comes from God, and God makes no mistake. So we got to thank the African-Americans for coming out and supporting themselves and being proud with themselves. And I just can't tell you, it's gutsy to do that in this day and age where we live. And the last group I want to honor with the mayor will be in one second, guys. Come on up. Get your all of you. There you go. They're going to say a few words in a minute, folks, as the mayor leaves, okay? I just want to get, make sure our mayor is here. Third group is one of our newspapers. You know, we identify with ourselves sometimes through what we read. For 30 years, Frontiers Magazine, and I've honored Karen Okam here as a Journalist of the Year Award for her incredible work, but Frontiers Magazine has been that journal in our great community. And interestingly, Paul Coretts, and we got to remember this, folks, that it's our family that's the most important part of coming out. When we come out to our parents and we come out to our family, we're connected in a very positive way. In 1975, Paul Coretts, a straight guy, befriended the gay community. Without straight allies, we're done, because we are a minority. And Paul, right here, come here, Paul. Paul was the guy who, back then, was supporting it, and he played a major role in the Frontiers discussion and ongoing. And I got to thank you, Paul, for your leadership. Okay? Frontiers, come on up. Now, here's Frontiers, folks. This is the guy, he's the publisher of it. Here's part of his leadership team. Okay? And where's the third one? There you are. I figured you were lost. And Karen Okam is over there. There you go.
Congratulations.
At that point, I want to thank the mayor for staying as long as he has and for being part of the program. God bless you, mayor. Appreciate it. I know, council colleagues, we want to get into the session here, but we do have a motion in front of you right now, and this is a motion that is the resolution supporting Ted Lieu. What Ted Lieu did up in Sacramento was breathtaking. Here is a man that stands up and he says, you know, gay people have to be treated right, and that this law that just passed the state senate, which will go to the assembly and be sent by the government...
Mr. Rosendahl, I sure hate to jump in.
That's okay.
Why don't we recess the presentation?
Yeah.
For a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Go to the actual agenda item.
Right.
I have one public comment card.
Perfect.
And then we'll come, once we vote on this, we will come back to complete the presentation. So stay there. Don't, don't anybody move. Senator, good to see you. So we're going to move to item three. I'm going to call up Hasenkamp, LaRue Hasen...
Lori.
What? Lori, I'm sorry for butchering your name, but you write kind of like me.
Come on up, Lori.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lori Hasenkamp. I'm the interim executive director of Equality California. Equality California is the largest lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender rights advocacy organization in California and the lead sponsor of Senate Bill 1172. The other sponsors are the National Center for Lesbian Rights, Lambda Legal, Mental Health America of Northern California, and GayLesta. Our organization has heard from many of our members about the devastating mental and physical health impacts of attempts to change a young person's sexual orientation, including suicide in some cases. We have also seen the devastating impact on parents and families when they are misled by therapists who give them false information that therapy can change a personal sexual orientation. Because this therapy has no scientific basis and carries such high risks, many of the country's major medical and mental health associations have issued policy statements considering its use. The American Psychological Association has adopted a resolution stating that there is insufficient evidence to support the use of psychological interventions to change sexual orientation and has urged mental health professionals to avoid misrepresenting the efficacy of sexual orientation change efforts by promoting or promising a change in sexual orientation. The American Academy of Pediatrics has advised youth to avoid any treatments that claim to be able to change a person's sexual orientation or treatment ideas that see homosexuality as an illness. The American Psychiatric Association has stated that in the last four decades, reparative therapists have not produced any rigorous scientific research to substantiate their claims of cure, and that the potential risks of reparative therapy are great, including depression, anxiety, and self-destructive behavior, since therapist alignment with societal prejudices against homosexuality may reinforce self-hatred already experienced by the patient. SB 1172 prohibits the use of sexual orientation change efforts on minors because they are uniquely vulnerable and the harms posed to them are so serious. Equality California respectfully asks the council to support this legislation through their resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, it's my understanding that we have a distinguished gentleman from Sacramento who happens to be a personal friend of mine that wanted to say a few words, but before he comes to the podium, Bill, I am going, I think that symbolism is important. So when we actually call for the vote, I'm going to have you come to the president's chair, and on that vote, you will be the president of the Los Angeles City Council. Yes. So why don't you, Bill? Don't get too used to it, though. I said temporary. Senator Lieu, please come to the podium.
Thank you. Let me thank you, Council President Wesson, and Bill Rosendahl, and Paul Coretts, and the entire council for all you've done in making LA a better place for all of us. As I was watching this presentation this morning, I kept thinking, progress cannot be stopped. And what we are doing here today is a day of celebration, but also, I'm very encouraged by this motion you're about to make. A Senate Bill 1172 is the first bill in the nation to ban gay conversion therapy for anyone under 18. And that's because, as lead sponsor of Equality California has pointed out, this doesn't work. But it's not just that parents are wasting their money at therapists who are engaging in what really is junk science. It's also dangerous, and the American Psychiatric Association has said that this poses great dangers, can lead to self-hatred, depression, in some cases, suicide. And so this bill is brought on behalf of patients like Kirk Murphy, who went through what was called the Sissy Boy Experiments, and he was given all sorts of crackpot therapies. His mother was told that if he played with toys that were feminine, he was to be ignored for the entire day. This therapy so damaged him that later he committed suicide. This bill is brought on behalf of patients like Ryan Kendo, who went through this therapy and was told by his therapist that being gay made God cry. He was told to butch up. He was told to play sports. He was told to fantasize about women. Thank goodness, he did not commit, he did not commit suicide, even though he wanted to. For 10 years, he went through this therapy, and now he's speaking out against it. On behalf of all the patients who are going through this, this bill is going to put a stop to that. This really is junk science. It is crackery, and it is hurting people. And so we trust you, Quest, and I vote from the LA City Council, and thanks again for having me here.
All right, folks, there's no one on the queue. We will vote on this. Open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 eyes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You noticed I got him out of his chair very quickly. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give a shout out to all the honorees, but a couple in particular. George Takei has been a friend of mine for 40 years, and I thought just a reminder, since most people either have forgotten or weren't even born yet, but George missed by just a hair of being a member of the City Council in Los Angeles in 1973, when he missed by just a few votes of being elected. And it was probably a good thing for him, because otherwise, he would have missed his entire movie career and all the Star Trek movies, and he's used the resulting fame that he has enjoyed to be a community and national and even international leader on many important issues. So I wanted to give a shout out to him.
And Mr. Coretts, maybe we should return to the presentations that Mr. Rosendahl needs to complete.
Well, I am assuming I am returning to those presentations. Speaking on that subject.
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, when he was president of the city council, indicated how he wanted to proceed, so if you would let me...
Hey, I'm fine with that.
Paul, just hold for a second. I want these three groups to speak real quick, and then colleagues can speak.
The floor is yours.
Okay.
Former President Bill Rosendahl.
Let me tell you, folks, it was kind of fun sitting next to Herbie up there, but he's been one of our greatest... But he's been one of our greatest supporters, our president of the council, on every issue on gay and lesbian rights. He's been with us 100%. We love you, Herbie. You've been a great president and showed great leadership on gay and lesbian transgender issues. You're the best. Folks, as you heard me in my quick remarks, where's Carmen Tutanich? I need our city attorney. Come over here. First of all, this is the guy who will say the law that we're doing is a good one, right?
That's exactly right.
Exactly. Okay, let him say a few words first.
Welcome, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, it's always a pleasure to be before this distinguished body. You know, this nation has come a long way. In 1996, only 25% of the people in this nation supported gay marriage. Today, we're over 50%. It shows that we are an enlightened nation and we're moving towards progress. I've enjoyed being married for over 34 years, and I am aware to a wonderful woman. I cannot believe that people cannot marry the people that they love. This is a nation where we need to recognize the rights of every individual to fall in love with the person of their choice, period. The time for bigotry is over in this nation. Yesterday, we went a long way in the First Circuit with the court decision, getting rid of that terrible law. Today, we have a president, just a few weeks ago, that came out in favor of what should be the rule across the land. And that is that anyone who falls in love with someone should be able to freely marry that person. Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak, Mr. President.
Our pleasure.
Thank you very much. We were rather quick before, my three folks did not get a chance to speak. I wanted his honor of the mayor to be here before he went to the funeral. But as you know, we were talking about young people first. The future are the young people. The more we support our young people, the better off we are as a nation. Wouldn't you talk a little bit about this, Jeff, what your group is and why I honored you, actually?
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl, City Council. It's great to be here. I'm thrilled to be here with the staff of the Jeff Griffith Youth Center. And we really appreciate this award. The staff at the Youth Center work very hard and tirelessly, and this is a nice celebration and recognition of the work that they do. As Councilmember Rosendahl mentioned, it's still a shame that so many young LGBT people are forced out of their home or feel they must leave their home, you know, due to discrimination, homophobia, abuse. Many of these young people find themselves homeless, alone, and in despair. So that's the work that we do as part of the LA Gay and Lesbian Center at the Jeff Griffith Youth Center. We work with these people every day. We help them rebuild their lives and capture their future. I do think occasions like this are great. They bring public awareness to this issue, and they help support us in our work, which is really great. I also think, though, and perhaps even more importantly, these occasions educate people. You know, they reduce family rejection of LGBT young people, you know, generate acceptance, promote community support. And these are all terribly important so all young people can grow and thrive in their communities. The Jeff Griffith Youth Center moves to a new space later this year. And this plaque, our presentation, is going to look really nice in our lobby. So on behalf of the staff at the Jeff Griffith Youth Center, I want to thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, when we talk about God, we talk about religion, we talk about love, we talk about equal rights. And frankly, the word marriage is codified in DC that does not allow our relationships to be sanctified so we get the social security, we get the various support systems that the word marriage gives. When President Clinton did DOMA and signed it, he made a mistake. And when you saw the courts rule up in Boston that they're going to bring it to the Supreme Court, and they're going to talk about getting rid of some of those DOMA discrimination laws against gay and lesbian people. So we're on a more optimistic note about that. And the second group suffers through the same issue and has. You know, a lot of African-American young men died during the AIDS epidemic. They were in the choirs, and there was never a discussion in some of the churches about what AIDS is, how AIDS is transmitted, and that, you know, in fact, a gay and lesbian person should get the same human civil rights and spiritual rights that any other group does. So the African-American community has come out of the closet, has come out of the back room, has now left Malibu, and they've come here to the city that they love, the communities that they love. And in that context, they even have an LMU graduation. Remember, these are Jesuits. And I was a Catholic boy. And I want you to know that it's an evolution happening among the Catholic Church as well as the African-American churches, and we're on the right footing. So I'd like, Black Pride, come on up, these two guys, and say a few words, and our elder, come on over here. My brother, you're up.
My name is Marcus Smith. I'm on the board of Los Angeles Pride and Promote, which produces Los Angeles Black Pride. I'm standing here with Vice President Michael Flowers and President Paul Scott and one of our elders in the community, Mr. Elliot Johnson. On behalf of Pride and Promote Los Angeles and the LGBT community of color, we thank Mayor Viragosa, Councilman Rosendahl, and the city council for formally giving us a place in the history of this great city we all call home.
For 24 years, we have honored our own heritage and pride in the shadows of a rock in Malibu, hiding from our neighbors, relatives, and society. Today, we no longer hide or need to hide because we know and because we know who we are, no matter where we are, and especially in our own backyard. We apologize. We know and trust and believe that our city will support us.
Honoring the accomplishments of LGBT Angelinos is amazing, but there's one more thing we have to do to make this all complete. We should be allowed to marry our partners in this very same building we now celebrate our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And the third group, I'd like Paul Karatz to come back up for this. It was kind of a clutter before. The Honorable Paul Karatz, as I've mentioned in the past, without gay friends, having straight friends, we're in trouble. And when Paul, in 1975, got engaged with this issue, he set an example for all of the straight people that gay people matter and they're important. He was going to do a resolution celebrating Frontiers. I said, let's save it for gay pride. And this was out of his own energy and his own sense of commitment to our people. So it's an honor to have Paul say a word and, again, hand them the plaque, and then he will then speak. Go for it, Paul.
Thank you, Bill. It's particularly an honor for me to recognize Frontiers magazine because it's been must-reading for me for the 30 years that it's been in existence. And it was somewhat coincidental, but in 1982, when this magazine was founded in West Hollywood, it was just the right place to get to cover from the beginning some of the most notable issues nationally and internationally relating to the LGBT community and beyond. In 1982, the AIDS crisis struck in earnest, and West Hollywood was the city in the United States most strongly hit, even before it was a city. For most of that time, one out of every 10 housing units in West Hollywood had someone who was HIV positive or had AIDS. And they've covered that crisis incredibly well for 30 years. Unexpectedly, a couple of years later, there was an effort to create a city in West Hollywood where the LGBT community, combined with senior citizens and Russian immigrants and others, and the city of West Hollywood was created, where we had the first openly gay and lesbian majority of an American city in history. We had the first openly lesbian mayor of an American city in history. And where we passed the first ordinance banning discrimination of any kind against anyone in the LGBT community. Those were the things that were covered most closely by Frontiers. And in the ensuing years, they have covered all the progress, all the ups and downs, and unbelievable progress that has been made in terms of LGBT rights. There's no entity that has covered that more closely and with more intelligence and grace than Frontiers magazine. They cover important organizations. They support important organizations to the community. They do a lot of good. And so it's my honor to recognize David Stern, and Mark Hundal, and Karen Ockham, and whoever else is here from Frontiers, and to recognize this magazine for the amazing work that they've done over the last 30 years.
All right.
Hi, I'm David Stern. I'm the publisher of Frontiers, for this leg of Frontiers. And 30 years, we celebrated in April. And I want to mention that I don't believe in coincidences or accidents. And for me, in my journey, I moved to LA in April of 1982, the same time that Frontiers was founded. So I say, if that was an accident, I'm glad I was accident prone. And Frontiers has always been about building community, being a platform for the community, but it really starts with family. And that is the family of Frontiers that I need to acknowledge. Our editors, our news editor, Karen Ockham, my business partner, Mark Hundal, and all of the writers and creative people and salespeople and everybody that makes that three-ring circus that we live in every day, the product that it is. I'm so proud of the team that I get to work with and show up the way we do. As I said, Frontiers is about building community and being the platform for the Los Angeles community. So as we move forward into this next leg of seeking out and demanding our equality, Frontiers will be right there, reporting the stories, doing what we do. And I thank you for the honor and happy pride, everybody.
All right.
Hi, I'm Mark Hundal. I'm co-publisher of Frontiers. I'd like to thank you very much. This is a terrific opportunity for us. And we're at 30 years. One of the things that we look at is that it's no longer enough to be called the paper of record, which is what Frontiers has been called here in Southern California. These days, with the internet, with blogging, et cetera, you have to go one step beyond that. And I think that what Frontiers brings to the city is currently perspective. And I know that many of you, in the past and currently, have been interviewed by our magazine, many of you, certainly by Karen Ockham, who will be speaking in just a second. One of the things I'm most proud of is that we do not believe that any of you have ever been misquoted. We do not believe that any of you have ever been treated unfairly. We're not a sensationalist press, but we do report on sensational stories. So there are moments that that occur. Historically, we've seen a lot of change in Los Angeles, the relationship with the police department. We are incredibly excited about this city council. You guys have a very tough job. You're coming out of a recession that's horrendous. And the gay community certainly wants to create any sort of alliance that we can to help you guys achieve your goals with rational partnerships. We hope to do that.
One quick comment from Karen Ockham, and then we're done, Mr. President.
Can I make one more comment? Okay. The last comment would be, the gay community last year was estimated spent $811 billion. Okay? Believe me, a lot of that money is being spent in your communities, the communities that you represent. So your knowledge of that and the importance of that and the support that that gives the city is very important to understand.
And Tioto certainly agrees with that. Karen, a final comment, a great journalist.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Bill and Paul in particular for honoring us tonight, today, this afternoon, whatever hell time it is. I also want to thank Dennis Zine for riding his motorcycle as a Republican in the Gay Pride Parade. You know, we do come in all stripes, as it were. And I want to thank Ted Lieu for coming down and talking about his ex-gay therapy bill. It's extraordinary. I particularly want to thank all the staff, the gay staff in particular, the LGBT staff who put this on. But, and for the staff who also advises their bosses about what's really going on. This is about LGBT pride today. But we cannot leave this room, this packed room, where Reverend Troy Perry, who started the MCC Church in 1967, is sitting here. We cannot leave this room without acknowledging that just this week, two gay kids hung themselves. This is not over. This is not a joke when we talk about gay pride, LGBT pride. We cannot have this shame. We refute the shame. And thank heavens that a number of you have come forward. You know, Herb Wesson, I thank you for your comments on the Assembly floor, you know, telling your story. Of course I do, I'm a reporter. Jewel, who has been around for so long, not only has the Catch One, but also has the Village Health Foundation, which is like a free clinic for everybody, low-income people. We go beyond. Richard Alacarn, who also, you know, talked about his, you know, family as well. We are here to report on you. You are the stories. But the stories go beyond Los Angeles. The stories go to the heart of what is troubling those gay kids who commit suicide. Please, when you think of LGBT pride this month, think of them, think about coming out, think about encouraging your friends to come out. This is important. We are human beings. We are people. We deserve equality. We deserve love. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, we do have a few colleagues that would like to say a few words. But I want to, again, re-thank our sponsors because they didn't have to step up, but they did. Toyota Motor Sales, give them a round of applause. Toyota Financial Services. Time Warner Cable. ABC Seven. Media Image PR. Wells Fargo. Disney. Fox Audience Strategies. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Put your jacket on, Mr. Zine. I'm going to call you to the microphone. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. And another special day in our great city. It's in these chambers that we honor the diversity of this great city of the angels. And only in America do you see this happen. Not too long ago, we had the Persian New Year, Nozrouz, at the same time as St. Patrick's Day. One side of the room were the Irish, other side were the Persians, honored one or the other. Only in this city, only in this country, do you see that happening. So what freedoms that we have, the precious freedoms and liberties that we have, the right to choose, the right to select, the one that we love. And I will be in the parade a week from this Sunday. I will be on that Harley Davidson, riding down the street. And it's interesting, I grew up in West Hollywood. I grew up on a street corner called Orlando, right near Los Yonica Melrose. And I know how that community is a vibrant community. If you look at West Hollywood, patrolled by the LA County Sheriff's Department, we have the commander here from the LA County Sheriff's Department. Step forward and take a bow. And the law enforcement that you get is professional law enforcement to keep people safe. And the people of that community support that community. I don't think they have a budget problem. I think their budget's in the positive versus the negative that we see in many communities. But when I think about the LGBT community and the opportunities and what they do to help the economy, what they do for the jobs, what they do for the community, it's very, very positive. And I looked at this book, and if you have a chance to look through this book, it outlines each district. It outlines each of the council districts. And looking at District Number Three and seeing the history, when the San Fernando Valley was farmland, they had a community that had, they had a book, a Damarong Guide. It published hotels, restaurants, bars in the United States that were gay-friendly. It talks about the community Tarzana, and it talks about places in my district today that are very supportive LGBT. And what I am going to do is take those locations, and I'm going to personally present them, the happiness certificates. the happinesses certificates that we present to businesses, to let them know that we appreciate what they do, to help the openness, to help people in the community of the San Fernando Valley, my district. If you have a chance to look at this, you'll see what great work is being done throughout the community of Los Angeles. And I want to acknowledge my seatmate, who we chat frequently. And last time I was at the parade, you were on the back of my motorcycle doing the dance. And I said, "Bill, when you're on a motorcycle, you can't do a dance on the motorcycle, because it's all about balance." And Bill's doing the whole dance. And Bill weighs like a couple hundred pounds. And I wanted to make sure we could get down Saddle Mountain Road without crashing. And Bill, you can jump on that motorcycle again. Eric Garcetti's been on in the past.
Watch your time.
Mr. Tutanis will be on his motorcycle. Mr. Englander, we challenge you to come out on your motorcycle, to ride in that wonderful parade. So Bill, thank you for acknowledging this wonderful day, and thank you for being here. You've got our support. You'll continue getting our support. God bless all of you. We're all people's children. God bless you, and thank you for being here.
Members, I will be monitoring your time. Mr. Laban.
Thank you. Welcome to City Hall. If it's your first visit, visit the Tom Bradley Tower on top to see this great city and remember the great, late mayor, Tom Bradley, and all his work. Also remember the work of Richard Reardon, which he did in advancing the cause. Give him a hand, because I know on his staff, he was very helpful. And for the record, it was Larry Vey, who was the first openly gay individual hired by Peggy Stephenson, who was a very great advocate for gay people in the '70s, long ago. And I believe Larry Kaplan was the first chief of staff for Mike Wu, for any council office. So there, and now, everybody's here, which is what City Hall's supposed to be. George Tekai, you're a great resident of the Fourth District. Thank you very much. The other honorees, we mentioned Troy Perry before. Where's Dr. Neil, Dr. Reverend Neil, Metropolitan Community Church? Give them a big hand. They just purchased a new church, the Mount Hollywood Congregational on Prospect and Rodney, not far from the corner of Hollywood and Vermont. So it's a good day. Congratulations to everybody. And to you, Mr. Rosendahl, how great you must feel as a member of this body, to be so supportive of all people. Give Mr. Rosendahl a big hand.
All right. Now, I'm going to call you, Mr. Buscaino, but not now. You go to your desk, and we'll switch and go to Mr. Alakarn. Oh, well, you guys got to let your president know what you're up to. Okay, well, Mr. Alakarn, we're going to call Mr. Buscaino. You know, Joe, I'm trying to wean Laban from speaking.
It's a special day, Mr. President.
All right, go right ahead.
I'm going to speak, Mr. President, if I may, from Bill's desk, to honor you, Mr. Rosendahl, for your continued commitment to our gay community. Thank you for continuing to be a champion for the rights of everyone in this city, specifically our gay community in this great city of Los Angeles. And I can tell you this, as a police officer, I've mentored kids who have struggled with coming out. They've come to me for guidance. You made mention of it earlier, how it was challenging for them to come out because of the family issues. And many of them faced suicide at times as well. So I get it. I just left a teen conference in San Pedro, including all the high schools. And one of the breakout sessions was dealing with social issues affecting our teen community. So with that, part of my staff, I wanted to ensure that, when I hired my staff, being new to this council, is my staff mirrors the makeup of our great city. And to know that Dennis Gleason's here, one of my communications deputy, is a great man. We're so proud of him. He's here with his partner, Jeremy Irvine, as well. And we love you guys. We thank you so much. And even though I like to stay on all fours, I won't be riding in a Harley at the Gay Pride Parade in West Hollywood. I'll be on the fire truck with Dennis. So we're looking forward to it. God bless you. We love you. And thank you so much for this great day in the city of Los Angeles.
Bless you.
Mr. Richard Alakarn.
Yeah, I am so proud to be a member of the city council. On my first day in office, Jackie Goldberg made the front page of the newspaper by kissing her partner on the lips, right here on the floor of the city council. And the city of Los Angeles has never looked back. We expanded domestic partnership benefits for city employees. We worked with the police department to improve their services across the board, and we're continuing to do that. We recognize through many, many resolutions, the position of the city council and the mayor to support gay rights across the board. And so, right now, I too want to give a shout out to our staff members, who are gay LGBT community, and their family members, who are in that community. Because, you know, we are not just representing ourselves here. We are representing the interests of our community, and our staff is a reflection of that. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all the LGBT community that help us do our job day in and day out, on every issue, not just on LGBT issues. But they really have enlightened us. As we get enlightened from all of our staff members on a variety of issues, clearly, we have benefited from their participation in our offices. So thank you, staff, for doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes to close. Mr. Reyes to close.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, thank you, Bill. It's an honor to be sitting next to you. There are so many challenges in our society today, the meanness, the inhumanity, and how some of our elected officials are speaking at the national level, some of the atrocities at the international level. And to be able to step up today and celebrate what is just love, what humanity should be. And to be able to just embrace that compassion for one another is a message that needs to echo in all our halls throughout this country, especially given the meanness of the dialogue and how we are persecuting people for being different, regardless of religion or lifestyle. It is a tragedy to see how the bullying exists in our schools. And I can go through the whole list of hardships because of ignorance, because of lack of understanding. So I thank you for educating us, for enlightening us, but more importantly, for your sacrifices. Because Lord knows how hard it can be. And I think when you're in the loneliest times is when we should be embracing each other in the most firm way to show that humanity and love. And for that, I say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And Mr. Rosendahl, before you unveil, I just want to say, we've come a long way, baby. Think about it. Would we have had this dream 15 years ago? Did I ever dream that I would see an African-American president of the United States of America? I am so proud to stand at your side during this struggle. We've accomplished a lot, but we still have a long way to go. But I tell you, in my heart and my soul, I know one thing, we're going to win. We're going to win. No, we are going to win. And that day will come, when people will be judged on their deeds and their actions, and not on the color of their skin, or who they sleep with, or what religion they practice. We're coming. God bless all of us. Mr. Rosendahl, let's close this presentation out.
In fact, I will. And I just want you all to know, first of all, all gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, stand up! Everybody, come on up, press the rope. Okay. And the next, even under the rope, come on up. Look, we're just about to close this. I'm going to ask the six honorees, the three mayor honorees, and the three honorees that I honored, to come up to this, and we're going to unveil the symbol of the moment, okay? But, Mr. Weson, when you were Speaker of the Assembly, I went up there as a TV guy, and I asked you about gay marriage, and you didn't even flinch, and you said you were supporting gay marriage. That was before it was in vogue or even appreciated in this country. So you're a true leader on the gay and lesbian issues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker and Mr. President at the same time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And on that note, we're going to go unveil the great moment over here. And that's the end of the program then, folks. Six honorees.
I'm a six honoree.
Come on, there's three mayors over there, and three councilmen. All right, let's grab it, either side. We're getting ready, the photo op's about to happen. Come on up, everybody. We've got the Twittering, and the Facebook, and everything else. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Yeah! Welcome, Goldberg. Go across the street and have some fun and some food. We're going to go in the back.
One more time, give all of us a round of applause. Mr. Tekai, live long and prosper. Let's go to Item Four, Madam Clerk. I have cards on Item Four. I have Arnold Sachs, followed by Mr. John Walsh. Bill, if you could help clear the aisle, so we can continue the city business. Help clear the city aisle, center aisle.
David? David Stern?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Everybody, show your people. Everybody, show your people.
Arnold Sachs, we're on Item Four. John Walsh, we're on Item Four.
I got here first.
Okay, but you know the rule. First, Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, you go first, followed by Mr. Sachs. Go on, Mr. Walsh, good to see you.
Thank you. It's always nice to come here since Garcetti got removed. You know, it's much better now. You've taken care of everything. And it didn't have to be the way it used to be. This is Item Four. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We have our endorsements up there. Come on up there, and come to our website. Now, on this issue, Item Number Four, this concerns Century City Business Improvement District. As you know, you now want to build a subway stop in Century City underneath Beverly Hills High School. Now, as you know, there are 2,400 children there, most of whom are either Iranian or Jewish. I have said over and over again, if it were a black high school, the black politicians would not have sold the blood of their own children. Had it been an Hispanic high school, the Hispanic politicians would not have sold the blood of their own children. But it is a Jewish high school, and the Jews on this board have sold the blood of their own Jewish children. I'm telling you right now, we are not, and we also have sold the blood of Jewish children. And I want to say, for what I said now, here, I had 10 cops grab me and throw me out of the meeting and ban me at Metro for what I said. And incidentally, just because I don't have a Jewish name, which means Polish or German, that doesn't mean I'm not Jewish. And I have the birth certificate of my Jewish great-grandfather to prove it. HollywoodHighlands.org, we will not allow a single drop of Jewish poison gas to kill a Jewish student at Beverly Hills High School, even though you voted for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sachs. Please come forward. Go ahead.
Thank you. Could you kind of like explain the parameters on what we're allowed to speak on, on these items? Item Four, it's Business Improvement District. I brought up numerous times the amount of money on this item. From the downtown news, mentions that the downtown historic core, the Business Improvement District there, has a budget of $1.3 million a year. And 64% of that money is spent on services for the Business Improvement District, which means 36% is spent on management. How much money is generated by the Business Improvement District? You think with the budget crisis the city is having, and the different pots of money, the city, the people that actually live in the city would have an idea or get an idea from their people that vote, or elected officials. But no. So how much money is generated by this Business Improvement District? How many Business Improvement Districts throughout the city exist? How much money is generated by all those Business Improvement Districts? We just heard in the budget discussions, the city mysteriously or magically took about $40 million from parking lot and parking garage improvement funds to help balance the budget. Well, how many Business Improvement Districts would there be in the city? Are there 20? Are there 30? If each one has a million, over a million dollar budget, that's $35 million. That's $40 million. How much money is available through the city? And how is it spent? We don't get any answers. It would be nice, especially with the budget crisis, to know. Because now that you've taken the money from the parking garage improvement funds, what's going to happen to the parking garages? And we've seen at Metro, they have a billion dollars, a billion dollars in deferred maintenance costs. How much is the city running in its deferred maintenance for its sidewalk improvement?
Thank you. Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue on this item. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go right in.
Mr. President, there's a request for that item to go forthwith.
Forthwith. Do we have to go into a special meeting to hear Item 10?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, can we move to the special meeting? Because what I'm going to do is continue Item 10 until this Tuesday. And what date is that?
That would be June 5th. June 5th.
Okay, so now I want to return to the regular meeting?
No. First, let's call the roll for the special meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm moving too fast here. Okay, call the roll.
Alakarn, Buscaino. Alarcon, Buscayeno, Cowardness, Englander, Garcetti, Wizar, Caress, Coria, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rolz, and Dollzine, 10 members, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, now, at the appropriate time, which is now, I request that we continue this item until Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, and that, again, that date is?
June 5th.
Okay, now, let us return to the regular.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular meeting?
Yes, I do. Okay, with that said, I want to go to item five.
Item five, call special for cards.
Mr. Sacks? Oh, no, wait, hold off, that's wrong. I, I grabbed seven. Item five is HollywoodHighlands.org, John Walsh, item five.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, a million and a half hits a year. Come and see our endorsements and also our latest sex scandal. First time I walked on the Hollywood Walk of Fame was 1966, when I lived in Westwood. You could eat off the floor. You could eat off the sidewalk, it was so clean. Take a look at it now. It's filthy, it's broken, it's, it is in terrible, terrible condition. And it's run through a state charter. The people in charge are not doing their job. If you don't believe me, go down and take a look at the cracks. It, uh, it is absolutely in terrible, terrible, and filthy, and also filthy. It wasn't like that when Bradley was mayor. You know what? I wish we could bring Bradley back. We should just, even if, if he rose again from the dead, he'd be the best mayor we ever had. HollywoodHighlands.org, Bradley got me rent control, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. No speakers on the queue on this item five. Let's prepare the vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna move quickly to item seven. Mr. Labange, are you moving towards me?
Item seven, called special by Mr. Englander and for cards.
Well, let's call the cards first, Mitchell, if that's okay with you? If I could get Arnold Sacks and John Walsh to, to come back up. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Every time I, last time I appeared here, I got 10,000 hits that day. 10,000 hits that one day. Okay, Hollywood Highlands, this is, concerns the fire department. As you know, uh, we have had the union member getting up here, the union president, McCosker, talking about, we are in danger, all of us. Someone almost choked to death and died, uh, in Century City because the nearest unit wasn't able to come because it was closed. This concerns software for the LAPD. Yes, we're 100% in favor of any software for the LAPD, which will make it easier for them to do the fantastic job that they do. You are starving the LAPD and overfeeding the LAPD. HollywoodHighlands.org, thank you.
Arnold Sacks?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I was just looking for some paperwork. Um, just out of curiosity, because there was a story in the LA Times about two weeks ago, referring to the response time for the fire department on calls. And it graphed from the year 2007 through the present. And it showed a drastic increase in the response time from 2007 to 2008. And it showed an increase from 2008 to 2009. And it showed an increase further along the line. So pray tell, with that increase showing up, how come the fire department was cut in its budget? How come somebody in city council didn't say, or from the fire department union, or the fire department commission, or somebody say, hey, we're showing an increase in response times to our calls? How can you cut our department? Why are we stuck in, in, in the mud now, when you show an increase through the years of a fire department call?
That completes public comment. Mitch Englander, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Working with the mayor's office, we've secured funding in the amount of $156,000 through UAWI grants to enable the fire department to produce software from Planetear Technologies. The software will be used to establish a reporting system to be called FireStat LA. That was on motion 120240, is the council file number that we have already passed establishing FireStat. It'll be similar to the police department's CompStat reporting system. The installation of the software will allow the fire department to integrate existing data into a more understandable format. One of the important functions of the software is that will allow the department to analyze the data for trends that will assist in the determination of when and where to allocate certain resources, much like the CompStat system for the police department. I don't have to tell you all the issues and problems that have plagued the data and the reporting systems with the fire department, which is why we needed to find resources immediately to implement a system similar to CompStat for FireStat system. The system is founded on the principles of accurate and timely intelligence, clearly communicated to all, rapid concentrated deployment, using the most effective strategies, and relentless follow-up assessment. This will forever change the way the fire department allocates resources, reports the information, and shares the information in a collaborative effort. And therefore, colleagues, I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers except Mr. Alarcon.
See, this is, uh, this is good for the fire department, but I also want to mention that we need to restore the equipment and the bodies to staff the fire department, because with all the, the information we have, if we don't have the bodies to implement the program, it, it doesn't work. So, um, this is just the first step in, in trying to restore those positions that have been lost over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. And to close, let me just say that one of the things that we've recognized with FireStat LA, which will be the new system for Los Angeles, and will be the first department, in fact, in the nation that'll be doing this for the fire department. Many doing it already for the police department with CompStat, as Bratton brought that here from New York and Chicago, and many other departments are doing that. But as Mr. Alarcon said, we've got to restore the surfaces, but you can't fix what you can't measure. And what we've got to do first, colleagues, is measure the problem and figure out accurate data, and not wait months for the data come in, but have real-time analysis. So that's exactly what we're doing and getting on track to do that. So thank you for that.
Mr. Englander, thank you very much for your leadership on this. There's no speaker on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes, so ordered. We're gonna open up public comment right now. If I call your name, please come up. Dr. Tom Williams, Arnold Sacks, John Walsh.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council. Remember, on Sunday, it will be Loomis Day in Highland Park, Historic Highland Park. Loomis Day? Why Loomis? Because he was a central figure for all northeast LA. He did a lot of things, one of which was the Southwest Museum. And we hope to celebrate not only his name, but a new page being turned for Loomis Day and for the Southwest Museum today. So let's get it started. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you speak, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Reyes.
Last item forthwith, please.
Forthwith on the last item we called, Madam Clerk, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, it's always a pleasure lately to come here. I don't see Mr. Garcetti's out raising money for his campaign, I assume. HollywoodHighlands.org, yes, that's right. Take a look at the latest sexual scandal we have up there, Cortina's Gate. Take a look, and it has a, a direct connection to what goes on here. We'd like to point out, it was, we had 700 or 800 gay activists here. The mayor gets up, it was incredible, and he's getting all this applause, hundreds of people. Then he says, and what a progressive police chief we have in Beck. Not one single person applauded. Because we know the chief Beck is a homophobe, and we know that, that he has a righteous campaign against gay bars. Now, don't listen to me, listen to the 800 gay leaders. Not one of them backed the mayor. We just want you to know that Prop 28, we're going to tomorrow, uh, next Tuesday, I'll be here to remind you next Tuesday. I've been here more often than I usually am because I want the endorsements out. We want Tori Osborne to defeat John Perez and to defeat Eric Baumann. We think that, uh, that the lawsuits have been filed. The city of, of Beverly Hills and the school board versus Mr. Coretts, who has sold the blood of Jewish children at Beverly Hills High School to JMB. And you know, JMB in Chicago, well, that's what it means in Chicago. Incidentally, the president of JMB held Obama's 50th birthday party, and as a present, the, the president, Obama, is now allowing him to put 2,200 schools' children in danger of being gassed, of which most are either Iranian, Jewish, or both. HollywoodHighlands.org, let the struggle continue. La lucha continua.
Mr. Sacks? Followed by Rick Abrams, Rosemary Demont.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Seems the headlines in yesterday's newspapers would regard the action taken by the city council to not support legislation regarding sidewalk repair for the city. Yet on the same day they didn't want to support state legislation, they dedicated an easement for sidewalk purposes in CD2. So who'll pay for that sidewalk repair somewhere down the highway that the city doesn't want in the first place? That being said, very interesting comment you made a little earlier, Councilman Alarcon, about having the bodies in the fire department. There's three stories in today's Daily Breeze. One regarding Mayor Viera goes to OK City's $7.2 billion budget. The budget delays layoffs for about 200 city workers for six months. The spending plan eliminates another 460 empty city positions. Empty city positions. Well, if they're empty, how come they're budgeted? I have a suggestion that you get together with the city unions and negotiate any new non-hires be paid at the rate of the city's living wage ordinance. That way you can double the amount of empty city positions for future budgets, so that if you have to make layoffs again or cuts in the budget, you'll have more, you'll have twice as many empty positions to cut. Makes sense to me. The governor of the state out of California estimates that his proposal will save the state 5% or 4.402 million dollars on salaries. In addition to proposed budget, we reduce the state workforce from about 216,000 down, down to about 225, 200, we reduce it down 4,000 workers. But he didn't say anything about cutting budgeted positions. Doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Rick Adams, Rosemary Demont. Mr. Adams? Rosemary Demont, followed by Fran Reichenbach. Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning, Council. By the way, it's Rick Abrams.
Oh, I'm, my, I apologize.
That's quite all right. Uh, when I came today, I wanted to speak about moral progress. And coincidentally, I was greeted by the greatest display of moral progress I think I've personally witnessed in my lifetime. It's very personal to me, since I've been gay my whole life. And I don't announce it usually because it's irrelevant, and the law should treat it as irrelevant and just let us be. But I didn't come to speak about that. But I will say, I remember when a councilman could not be openly gay on this city council. I remember when an aide or pro, Tim, someone with Bradley was set up and was forced to resign because he was gay. And we all know that West Hollywood exists because of the old behavior of Los Angeles. But I'm not here to criticize, but to point out the great progress that the city of Los Angeles has made. And about that, I think we all should be extremely proud, because progress is what's important. Now I'm gonna quickly turn to another matter, though, that is very important. This council votes together 99% of the time. That is indicative to me of corruption. You cannot have 15 people agree 99% of the time if they're following the Brown Act and deliberating in public. You cannot have these votes take place within two seconds if you're deliberating in public. I suggest, however, the first place to start, to end this practice, is to take the machinations behind the scenes in the Hollywood plan out of its closet and discuss it in public now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Ms. Demont, followed by Fran Reichenbach.
Well, it's a pleasure to come before the city council. If they were here, it would be nice to have people to listen to you. I am Rosemary Demonti. I am part of the People for the Livable Communities of Los Angeles, and I, I joined this group because I am a Los Feliz resident, although I am in the Hollywood Community Plan. But I joined this group to be able to hopefully avoid a lawsuit, because what happens in Hollywood does not stay in Hollywood. Uh, all the surrounding communities will be, uh, foisted with the problems coming from this overdevelopment in Hollywood. Thursday, I was at the board, the DWP Board of Commissioners, and to my horror, got to learn that we have to purchase 2/3rds of our water from the Metropolitan Water District because we don't have enough water for the city of Los Angeles in our, in our thing. And we are going to be increased 54 cents per unit for this water on top of the privilege. And that day, they allowed this large monstrous Millennium Project to come online where we do not have water. And you're gonna ask us to pay for them to in the future. This is, I, I, not against development, I just wish you would do it in a human scale. Bring down the sizing on the Hollywood Community Plan, please. And as Mr. Abrams said, please, discuss it, really discuss it. Do not just agree with your fellows that be and with the developers that be, because we are the people, and you have a responsibility to give us a better city. Please. And also, I would like to say that, uh, for image sake, LA and Hollywood have an image of palm trees. They do not have an image of skyscrapers. So please, give us a break and do the right thing and take this Hollywood Community Plan and revisit it, because the data is all totally wrong.
Thank you. I think it's Ziggy Cruz, and maybe a Danielle American Lung Association and a Daniel Wright. Please come forward. Go right ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is Fran Reichenbach. I'm, uh, I live in the, in the Hollywood Land area of Beechwood Canyon. Over the past few weeks, you've heard from many Hollywood residents that they oppose the current version of the Hollywood Community Plan update. And I'm here to, again, to tell you why so many are asking you to place this on your next agenda. By now, you've been informed about the city attorney is looking at the probability of several lawsuits expected if you approve this plan. If you vote to approve the Hollywood Community Plan update, the lawsuits go forward, and much of the people's tax money will be spent in litigation. Those same taxpayers are asking you to vote this plan down. Here are some salient facts about the plan. This plan is full of inaccurate population data and wild growth projections. There isn't funding to pay for a traffic study, so this plan has no current temp. There is no downzoning alternative included in this plan, therefore it is incomplete. The plan deviates from the general plan, frame, plan framework in that it is growth-inducing rather than growth-neutral. While the city is ignoring these larger overall issues, the planning department seems to be concentrating on small detour, details that skirt around the monumental and legal issues inherent in the current version of this plan. The only way to correct this situation is for you to vote to send this plan back to planning for correction, the addition of an up-to-date temp, and the inclusion of a downzoning alternative. Then the EIR can be recirculated, and we can come back before you to support it. Don't let politics get in the way of the integrity needed to go forward. Please ask that this get on the next city council agenda. SaveHollywood.org and People for Livable Communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Ziggy Cruz, and I live in Hollywood. But I have relatives living in the Los Feliz area as well. And unless you know, when I mean you, the council knew a secret how to produce water, like a snow or rain dance perhaps, the city of LA is in big trouble. And how can any responsible council add any more density to a city that has no water, such as what the Hollywood Community Plan is suggesting? As we say in Hollywood, that's the kind of stunt we would like you all to pull off. But you can't. You're not gods. You're the servants of the public. And so far, we feel like we have reached nothing but deaf ears. If the community plan moves forward as it is right now, that's the stunt you need to keep in order. In Hollywood, if a stunt gets prepared, everybody looks at current and accurate data. They don't just go by stuff that happened 15, 16, 17 years ago. Technology evolved, use it. So if the Hollywood Community Plan uses old data, that's the kind of stunt that's going to go bust, which means not just Hollywoodians, but Los Angeles Angelinos, basically, are all in for big injuries. Is that really something that this council would like to have on its record by approving eventually a plan that is flawed, fatally flawed, and should have been recirculated at the first time around when the constituents came out to address you with their concerns? So please reconsider it when it comes in front of you, like Ms. Reichenbach asked. It should be the full council sending it back for recirculations of the EIR so that lawsuits and injuries can be avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle, American Lung, yeah, come forward, please. And I'd state your name. Daniel Wright, you're on deck.
Good morning. I'm Danielle Cuppanen, and I am a Los Angeles Leadership Board member for the American Lung Association in California. On January 19th, the American Lung Association in California released its State of Tobacco Control Report, which grades California and all cities and counties in California on its tobacco control policies. This year, more than ever, California's grades have particular importance. Our state has historically earned low marks for its cigarette tax and tobacco prevention, control, and spending grades, which is surprising considering the state's leadership role in reducing smoking and the health impacts from tobacco. And that is why I'm here today, to thank you for your support in endorsing Proposition 29. On behalf of the American Lung Association in California, American Cancer Society, and American Heart Association, and the rest of the sponsoring organizations on the Yes on 29 campaign, we appreciate your endorsement on Prop 29 last week. Prop 29 will raise more than $855 million annually to fund research for cancer and other tobacco-related programs, as well as invest in tobacco prevention, education, and the law enforcement efforts, which will prevent 228,000 kids from smoking. If you thought smoking was someone else's problem, you're wrong. In fact, smoking costs California $9.14 billion every year in healthcare costs. That's a total of $18.1 billion in combined healthcare and productivity loss cost. Endorsing Prop 29 is the single most important thing you can do to help raise the grade in California and protect all Angelinos from the deadly impacts of tobacco. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Daniel Wright.
Good day, council members. Daniel Wright, on behalf of the Southwest Museum Committee of the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance, representing over 600 residents in the neighborhood that is home of the Southwest Museum for the last 99 years.
This is item one, Mr. Wright. You can't speak on it during the general.
I understand that. I'm going to speak to the general jurisdiction of this council, which is proper. As redistricting goes in, as redistricting goes.
One second, Mr. City Attorney. Wait one second. I'll hold your time. Okay, we'll try to continue, and I'll give you your time that you may have lost. But if it reflects on item one, then we will stop you.
It does not about item one. It reflects generally upon the Southwest Museum issue, but not on item one. Okay? Thank you. As redistricting goes into effect, we want to thank Councilmember Jose Wezar for his leadership in seeking an equitable treatment of the assets of the Southwest Museum. In fact, all are invited to the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance's farewell party on June 11th in recognition of Councilmember Wezar's years of service to his community on this issue and others. We know that he will continue to support this issue in the future. And we also want to express our gratitude to Councilmember Ed Reyes, who takes over for Mr. Wezar as we move into a new redistricting map. He will be the lead on this issue. Mr. Reyes has also shown determination that the assets of the Southwest Museum be treated with equity. I'd also like to ask everyone here in support of the Southwest Museum, please stand up and show your support. This is an issue that remains a difficult one and one that we hope that can be resolved in the near future. It is one that these people standing behind me and many, many thousands who have signed petitions that stand with them but cannot be here today, support, which is an equitable treatment instead of one of disparaging remarks and ignoring of fiduciary duties. Thank you for your attention, and we'll speak more specifically on the item when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Olga Hall, Dow House Dude. In fact, Dow House Dude, you're right there. Come on, come on. Olga? Okay, I'll go speak later. Felicito Figueroa? Felicito Figueroa, Mr. Dude.
I need to distribute these papers to each one of you before I start speaking, so maybe I'll go later.
You should go now.
You should have this in your desk before I start speaking.
Mr. Dude, you're going to lose your time, so just go now.
Okay. As always, I'm talking about probably the most important issue in the history of humanity. Because this issue has affected us for thousands of years. The issue of having a system where the feudal lord rules over somebody else's life. And the feudal lord now is the banks and the landlords. We need to eliminate landlordship. We need to change the real estate laws so that every single person in the world has the right to have a roof over their head or to have a little place where nobody's telling them, "You don't belong here." Everybody needs at least, at least as much room as they will get in a grave when they die. Everybody needs a little place on earth where they are not bothered. And Mr. Rosendahl, great for the gay movement, but he wants to gentrify Venice. He wants to get rid of the homeless. See, the homeless issue is the biggest issue. You go back to Jesus Christ, blah, blah, blah. He never had a home, right? Et cetera. So the homeless issue needs to be solved in our generation. I'm asking the council for help in creating an organization that will definitely erase homelessness forever. And I have a formula, and you need to hear about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Felicito Figueroa. And in the future, if I call your name, would you please report to the center aisle?
Excuse me? Speaking to me?
Yeah, I called you before Mr. Dude started to speak. Anyway, now it's your time. That's the way we do things here, three people at a time. Go right ahead, sir.
The first question that I would like to ask you is, are you being negligent? I will, okay. Walk forward. Walk forward. Is it good? There you go. Is that, is that better? Okay. Are you being negligent? Okay, we are grown people here, okay? We're not children in kindergarten, okay? You all graduated from a prestigious school. And I'm asking you, are you being negligent to recognize the situation that I'm in? No question? No, no answer to my question? Why does this explanation elude me? I ask you. Why? Just because that flag is waving over your head? And because you have a, how would you say? You're in a more... Let's put that aside. Look, what I'm trying to say is that this has happened, this has got to stop. What you people are putting me through in, I've, you know, I've gone through history and events, you know? I've read about history, and I've, how would you say, read about events. But what you're doing to me is the most negligible, the most dehumanizing that you can, how would you say, allow for a person to, how would you say? It's very upsetting, you know? You can laugh at me, you know, but I'm freaking angry, you know? You record me every single time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expired. Okay. Now, I'm going to call, I'm going, sergeants, help, help him find his seat or help him find the way out of here. I'm going to call on Mr. Reyes. But I want to, before you begin speaking, I want to announce to all of the people that are here to speak on item nine. In the, we were caught up in the presentation portion of our council meeting today. We legally should not be having any public comment on item nine because we had a full hearing last week. But since you've been here so long, I will afford you 15 minutes, one minute each. So you guys may want to huddle. If there are special people that you'd like to have come up, we'll try to accommodate that. So I want you to think about it as we move to item number one. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and colleagues. One, we have an amendment I'd like to read to the record, which does open up public comment. But I wanted to ask the guests that are here, because of a threat of losing quorum, I'd like to limit the public comments to 10 minutes after I read this amendment into the record. And I would thank the Council President for allowing us that time, knowing that we do stand a chance of losing quorum. So that's why I'm trying to move as fast as possible. The amendment is follows, colleagues, is that this motion to instruct the CLA and the CAO to report to the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, as well as Budget and Finance, within 60 days on the progress of these working group discussions in regard to the Autry Center and the Southwest Museum and Casa de Adobe. So that was the amendment, colleagues, to this motion. And we can open up for 10 minutes. Thank you, Council.
What do you want? One minute per speaker? Okay. Then let me call Steve Crouch, Norma De La Pina, Martha Benedict, Raul Marcias. Well, I'm just striking out, okay? Marie Leon?
We will make this short in honor of time today. The Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition is who I'm here to represent. And we would just like to thank councilmembers Reyes, Wezar, and the Arts Committee for passing the motion and being before you today. We look forward to working with the city on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you speaking on behalf of the entire group or?
Yes.
All righty. And you didn't identify yourself. You were?
Nicole Posert.
Okay. All right. Anyway, thank you all so, so very much for being so sensitive. All right, with that said, Mr. Reyes, we can move forward on the vote. There are no speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll. Wait a minute, there's someone in the back. Will you still have time? Identify yourself, sir. Hurry up.
I did sign a card. And I signed a card too, sir.
Okay, well, go right ahead.
As a resident of Mount Washington, I wanted to thank Councilman Reyes, Councilman Wezar, for their undying dedication to the community and the existence of the Southwest Museum, the oldest museum in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank the Arts Council with Councilman Alarcon and previously, Councilman Le Bonj for their support. I just want you to know that it's an iconic building. It'll say everything about this city and its feeling about history, arts, and the people that founded it. And I hope you pass this resolution or this amendment or whatever it's called to get the Renaissance of the Southwest Museum building alive and well again. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe it is our desire to pass this if I can maintain a quorum. So Marie Leon, Daniel Wright, Stanley, Dr. Stanley Moore, Anthony Castillo. And that was Robert Brody, right? Agale Burns, Arnold Sax.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sax. I'm just surprised that you've never responded. I may be wrong about an ad hoc committee for the Southwest Museum. But I would like to caution the public here who support this museum before you go putting your eggs into Mr. Reyes's basket. This is an item registered at the County Board of Registerr's office, corporation-grant deed that cedes property to the Gold Line Construction Authority. It was dated from 2007. Councilman Reyes sat on the Gold Line Construction Authority, and you can check this out with the MTA and with, damn. The Gold Line Construction Authority wasn't made legal until 2011. How could he sit on a construction authority, a state agency or county agency that wasn't legal five years before it existed?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reyes, there are no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let us please open the roll on this very important issue. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Where's Mr. Rosendahl? Well, I challenged Mr. Zine height-wise, and I couldn't see that he was there. So Bill, how do you, oh, I indicated how I thought we would proceed with item nine, but I will let you kind of put everything in context.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item nine has to do with Playa Vista and maps. If we have 10 minutes, would that work?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, before the 10 minutes starts, how many are here in favor of the way it's being presented by Playa Vista? Could you stand for a quick second? Okay, could you all sit down? Now, those in the room that feel strongly against the maps, I would like to see who you are as well. Okay? We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So if we could do this, Mr. President, I would like to do 10 minutes, five each side. And I'd like to ask the people to work out among themselves who the five are.
Let's do this, Mr. Rosendahl. The individuals that oppose the project, would you come up here and get in line? I saw one gentleman, here he comes.
Yeah.
And there was, who else?
Yeah, and that's Rex Frankel.
Just line up behind Mr. Frankel, the people that are in opposition. Okay, sir, please.
Thanks. I've got a more specific statement I'll be giving you, but I represent, don't privatize Playa Vista Park. Playa Vista Parks and other local environmental groups. Uh, I'm Rex Frankel. I don't think any of you would support selling off Griffith Park to developers in exchange for them creating a half-acre mini park in each of our neighborhoods. Big parks provide greater opportunities for public recreation than often ignored pocket parks. Pocket parks are good, but they don't serve the general public. The action on today's agenda would severely damage the major parkland mitigation measure of Playa Vista's Phase II development. The four large parks in the current approved project are not just there as selling points for the luxury condos, but they are supposed to be fully accessible to the general public as mitigation measures for a wide array of negative environmental impacts and for the huge upzoning of this land from near zero development rights to the massive and dense urban project you approved in 2010. Playa Vista seeks today to slice and dice and convert three of those four parks into mini and micro parks, which will be too small to be useful to the general public. Some will be surrounded on all sides by Playa Vista's condos. Some will be no more than sidewalk landscaping. None will fit the original promise of fully accessible, large, active public recreation type.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel.
Two of them, so if they could...
Oh, you know what? Uh, but no, well, and then I'll, I'll let Arnold Sacks come in. So if it's just the two, go right ahead.
Thank you. As Aristotle said many years ago, "The whole is greater than the sum of the parts." Thus, converting three great parks into a bunch of miniature and private parks takes away the great promise as stated by Playa Vista's CEO, Steve Soboroff, at the public hearings in 2010. Great public parks. And as stated by their attorney, quote, "Anybody can go there, accessible to anybody in the public." This plan today reduces the parkland mitigation measure's effectiveness and is a great sellout of the public interest. As a hiker leader leading a weekly evening hike tour of Biona Open Spaces, we hear thousands of happy frogs croaking in this creek every night at sunset, right next to where this current plan wants to locate loud soccer and softball fields. In contrast, the existing plan put these noisy and intensive uses in the three parks located within the condo neighborhoods in Phase II, not in the park next to the Habitat. So essentially, since I'm going to paraphrase, this plan is taking what was originally promised as four large parks, reducing them down to mini parks, changing the use so that it's less conducive for the general public to go and, and make use of these parks, even though their promise is being accessible to the general public. It basically is privatizing these parks and making them little, uh, basic selling points for Playa Vista's condos. So this is something that was not authorized by the City Council in 2010. Uh, there are new environmental impacts that you are not considering, you've done no sequel analysis of this, and you need to do that before you adopt these changes to the project.
If you would close.
I'll let other speakers speak.
Okay. Ma'am, please come forward, identify yourself.
My name is Kathy Knight. I'm representing the Airport Marina Group Sierra Club and Grassroots Coalition today, and we're asking that you please follow the California Environmental Quality Act process when you're changing the mitigation measures on the project. There are a lot of people that would like to talk about that they were promised all this open space, and now they're not getting it. Also, uh, we want to know, uh, the Tongva, Gabi Lino, um, there's objections in the record. Um, Playa Vista dug up 1,400 of their ancestors, um, a lot of them are very upset, and I think you should respect them, and you should answer their issues before you would approve this. Also, we need to study the impacts of changing the open space in these large areas. It's one of the worst gas seeps in the western United States, according to experts, and what is the impact of changing that open space? You have an audit in 2007 that said there's major problems with the gas mitigation systems out there, and as far as we know, nothing's been done about that. Um, you need to address those issues. And also, there's other mitigation measures. There's no mitigation monitor that was promised for the bond people. Finally, I gave you a handout. The state of California says that Playa Capital Company, according to their records, is, um, not in compliance. I forget the exact term. Let me see, it's, um, they are forfeited. So why are you doing a major gas seep like this area with a company that's forfeited, according to the Secretary of State's records as of yesterday? Please explain, who is Playa Capital, and why are they forfeited?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arnold Sacks. One minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I'd just also like to point out the fact about, my concerns about the methane mitigation, the gas mitigation, and to show the disparity that parts of Playa Vista development have methane gas mitigation, but over here in downtown LA, or midtown LA, at The Grove, where there was a fire on Third and Fairfax, there is no gas mitigation for the methane. It's amazing what money will buy.
Thank you. Okay, um, there are no speakers in the queue on this item, Bill. We can pass it along if you'd like, or do you want to close?
Well, I, I think you should give a few minutes to the Playa Vista people to speak on this.
Okay, if you guys would like, or would, what would they prefer most? Would they prefer to speak while we still have a quorum and our vote counts, Bill?
Um, yes, it'll be short.
Okay.
It'll be short.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Council President Wesson. Can I ask Sherri Cunningham of the Jewish Home for the Aging and David Binswanger of Lincoln Properties to join me here, please? I'm Patty Sinclair.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Patty Sinclair, the co-president of Playa Capital Company. You already know we have many speakers here today on behalf of our subdivision track, our final track map. They've all agreed to waive their time. I did want you all to meet Sherri Cunningham of the Jewish Home for the Aging and David Binswanger of the Lincoln Property Company, who are getting ready to build the first two projects in our Phase II area. We are very proud of our park system. Mr. Frankel is simply wrong. The four parks that he alleges were promised were not promised. The conditions of approval require over 17.69 acres of park space. We have more than that. Those conditions were approved at a duly noticed public hearing, which Mr. Frankel attended, and were posted on the city's website in advance of that hearing. So I'd just like for you to hear a few minutes from Sherri and from David, who are standing, ready to build in our community, and need this map to proceed.
Let me just ask you, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir. Happy to.
Have you ever been in the sales business?
Excuse me?
Have you ever been in sales?
Have I ever been in sales? No, sir, I'm a lawyer by training.
They know, because what happens when you made your sale? You pull out your ink pen and sign the deal. But if you want to come up and, and, and speak, come up and speak.
I would like, um...
Come on, come on.
Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Binswanger only.
Come on.
Thank you very much. My name is Sherri Cunningham. I'm the CFO with the Jewish Home for the Aging. We've made a very significant decision to expand our campus beyond what we have in the San Fernando Valley with a new site in, in the Village at Playa Vista. We made this decision because of the significant need for additional senior housing on the west side and our confidence in the Playa Vista community and its future. We've looked at several sites, but Playa Vista is an absolutely beautiful community, which will be an ideal location for the Jewish home. We've been waiting for quite a while for the 2010 sequel litigation to end, and we are ready to move forward. We cannot do so until the land is subdivided. The council office and Reckon Parks have approved plans for the parks and open space. We at the Jewish Home strongly urge your approval so we may move forward with our plans to be part of the beautiful and sustainable community of Playa Vista. Thank you.
I'll waive my time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, Mr. Zine, see what happens?
Well, I must comment on the representative from the Jewish Home, which is in my district in Reseda. Um, population approximately 1,000. They have Fountain View, which is a, a senior facility. They have different wings of the Jewish Home. Part of it's on Victory, part of it's on Sherman Way. They have single-family residents that are utilized for many of the seniors. Many of the people in this room are seniors, and, uh, they cause no disruption whatsoever to anyone. Uh, it's a wonderful addition to a community. It gives people a place of safety, of security. Uh, the loved ones come by and visit with them. Uh, the biggest event they have is the Mother's Day celebration, which we just held, and it's just a wonderful benefit to a community. So when I heard the Jewish Home comments, uh, I wanted to add my support, just because of the 10 years I've been in the council office, and prior to that with law enforcement, dealing with the Jewish Home, uh, the staff, the residents, exec, uh, in addition, excessive, in addition to the community. It's never a problem, it's always a benefit, it's always a positive. So I didn't know they had the plan to include, but it's a wonderful location. I could just, uh, give accolades to the management, the operation. We need a place for our seniors. The Jewish Home is an ideal location for senior population, and interestingly enough, you don't have to be Jewish to be at the Jewish Home, because I am not Jewish, but I was presently executives twice. So you get a Catholic Lebanese to be an executive leader at the Jewish Home. It shows that they open the doors to all people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl, close it out.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, and thank you, colleagues, for staying for this. I know everybody has full schedules, and of course, I'm just going to ditto the Jewish Home. There are 3,000 people presently involved with the Jewish Home, 2,000 are in their homes where they're getting support, and 1,000 are in their various facilities. I truly love that group, and if they were able to come into my district, I would be totally honored. So on this particular issue, folks, that we have before us, I ask for an eye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
No speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Congratulations. Uh, where does that bring us, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posted and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, member, Mr. Labange.
Again, invite everybody, Fire Station 82, open house tomorrow, and dedication, this new great station on Hollywood Boulevard, right at Van Ass Avenue, right off the Hollywood Freeway. Also, north central Los Angeles, open house for our Bureau of Sanitation. Come and learn things from our Bureau of Sanitation. Also, thank our great sanitation workers for their efforts.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Uh, items that we want to inform our community that are taking place, um, this weekend, tomorrow, June 2nd, a pedestrian cleanup in Tarzana. Public's invited to help us clean up areas of Tarzana. Also, we're going to have the grand opening of the new LA Fitness, uh, Victory in Canoga. And tomorrow is the Ninth Annual Valley Traffic Division, Valley Traffic Advisory Council Car Show at Warner Center Park. A number of cars, activities, all sponsored by the community LAPD, Valley Traffic Division. Public, again, is invited to that. Bring your children, uh, let them work with the police and see the positive benefits that are taking place. And on Sunday, which is, I think, going to be Saturday and Sunday, the St. Mary's of a Syrian festival, that's going to be at 5955 Lindley. It's a great festival, and that takes place in front of the church, 5955 Lindley Avenue, a Syrian church. St. Mary's, the Syrian festival. Public is invited to that. Lot of activities this wonderful weekend in the San Fernando Valley, so come on out as we await the docking of the Iowa in San Pedro.
Mr. Zine. Anyway, Mr. Alacon.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, mention the Fifth Annual Family Expo, sponsored by the Youth Policy Institute at McClay Middle School in Pacoima. From 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, lunch will be provided, that's Saturday, June 2nd. There will be student showcases, a resource fair, college workshops, performances, sports clinics, games and activities, and health screenings.
Mr. Buscaino.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. The Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council will be hosting the San Pedro Youth Employment Education for tomorrow, Port of Los Angeles High School, uh, 9 o'clock. Come join us, thank you.
Any other announcements? Mr. Englander.
Yes, uh, tomorrow is our first family fun festival that we're hosting at Northridge Park. We expect thousands to come out, as we're going to have bands from local high schools as well at the end, and many booths from local organizations. Lots of activities for families and children of all ages, and we will also have a movie in the park at Northridge Park following the festivities. That'll be tomorrow. Thank you.
What movie?
Puss in Boots.
You know I borrowed that idea, movies in the parks, from you, and our starts, I think we're three weeks, four weeks out, and the first movie that we're showing is Puss in Boots.
There you go. Well, uh, hopefully we're getting a deal on the rental, and I'll just flip it over to you when we're done, and...
I doubt it. Any more announcements, members? Mr. Reyes.
Tomorrow, we have the great celebration, Loomis Day, in the, uh, Highland Park area, Heritage Square. Uh, essentially, we are able to celebrate the different cultures that make up this great region, of the Californianos, the Native Americans, the Mexicano, American. Uh, song and dance, beautiful architecture, Heritage Square off of Homer Street, right off Avenue 43 on the Passage and Freeway. You're all welcome and enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And again, I want to give a special thanks to Tom Labange and, uh, Tony Cardness for coming in so that Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks could attend the funeral of H.H. Bishop Brookins. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
My apologies, it's Sunday, June 3rd, from 10:30 to 7:00.
Okay, Mr. Reyes corrected it, it is not Saturday, it's Sunday. Members adjourning motions, Mr. Labange.
Uh, members, Gerald Coats, Los Angeles City Fire Inspector, active duty member, had a heart attack. He died on the 20th of May. He was much-loved and respected, and a leader in fire inspection for the Hillside area. Led a team of 13 inspectors. Uh, of his service of over 25 years at the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and mostly with roles in inspection. Uh, his services were today. I wanted to make sure we all adjourned his memory, survived by his son Ryan and, uh, and many family members. I ask for adjourned memory of Fire Inspector Gerald Coats.
All members, all members. Mr. Keretz, did I see your hand up?
Yes. I'd like to adjourn in memory of, uh, Dr. David Ramoin, um, who was a giant in the field of medical genetics and the founding president of the American College of Medical Genetics and Geonomics. Um, he had multiple degrees, including a doctorate in human genetics from Johns Hopkins University. He was well-known for his research on diabetes, in which he found, uh, and doctors originally disagreed, but 10 years later found that he was right, that, um, type 2 diabetes is not one illness, but multiple somewhat different illnesses. Um, he also is well-known internationally for his research, Mr. President, you and I can appreciate this, on people of short stature. Um, and he actually went as far as, uh, traveling to Africa and working with the Pygmy, Pygmy tribes in his research, and actually did remarkable groundbreaking research in this arena. Um, he was a professor of pediatrics, medicine, and human genetics at the David Geffen School of Medicine at UCLA, and the director of the Medical Genetics Institute at Cedar Sinai Medical Center in Los Angeles. Uh, a true giant in his field, and he'll be greatly missed.
Sounds like that, Mr. Keretz. Members, any other adjourning motions? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, a, a young lady dying, her name is Cara Harrison. After a short-life battle with muscular degenerative disease, Cara Harrison passed away on May 25th, 2012, at the home under the hospice care of Providence Trinity Kids Care Hospice. She was only 14 months old. Born on March 6th, 2011, she was the only child born to her parents, Robert Benton Harris and Karen Ruth Harrison. Her time on earth was brief, but her impact will last for their lifetime. Her father, Robert, a coordinator for the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life programs, all too familiar with families who have asked the question, "Why me?" Sees Cara's time with him and his wife as a shining moment that will never fade from their hearts. Mark Antonio Grant, as you know, is one of my deputies, who is still, um, in the reality of cancer. He, he did have surgery, um, and he has bounced back, and he's become an inspirational speaker on cancer issues around the nation, and he asks that, that I go forward with this adjournment. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Members, any other adjourning motions? With that said, this council is adjourned.